Sunny Brooks Farms subdivision. Agenda item number twenty-three zero-two. Our next item is approval of a change order for the construction services agreement between the city of Milton and C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. For the reconstruction and resurfacing of the roads called out in the bid document as bid alternate number one Deerfield Parkway and bid alternate number three Bethany Road. Agenda item number twenty-three zero-three. Our fifth and fourth and final is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Tizzie Liz Design LLC for graphic design services. Agenda item number twenty-three zero-five.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore with a second councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Tammy, if you'll sound the first item.
Our first item is the proclamation recognizing Veterans Day. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, this is always an honor for me and our council. And today I have a proclamation for Veterans Day 2020. Whereas it has long been accustomed to commemorate November eleventh, the anniversary of the ending of World War One by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by redirecting ourselves to the course of peace. And whereas in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in several other great military conflicts which have added millions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas the Congress passed a concurrent resolution on June fourth, nineteen-twenty-six, calling for the observation of November eleventh with appropriate ceremonies and later provided in an act approved on May thirteenth, nineteen-thirty-eight, that the eleventh of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. And whereas, in order to expand the significance of that commemoration and in order to be that a grateful nation might pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all of its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, the Congress, by an act approved June first, nineteen-fifty-four, changed the name of the holiday to Veterans Day. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton hereby call upon all of our citizens to observe November eleventh, twenty-twenty, as Veterans Day. On that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom. And let us consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. And that's given under my hand and the seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the second day of November, twenty-twenty. Do we have any veterans in the audience to, that we can present this to? If those veterans would step forward and I'd like to...
Got a couple of staff members.
Yep. I'm glad you're shaking your hand, but it was just... Thank you for all that you have done and done so well. Thank you very much. And if you guys, if you want to stand right back here in the council just and maybe Joe and Laura will get a picture. Thank you so much. Okay, if our city clerk will please sound the next item.
Our second item is the proclamation recognizing Native American History Month. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, and I'm also proud to submit this proclamation. All right, I have a proclamation for Native American History Month. Whereas the Americans we know as American Indians and Native Americans were the first explorers and settlers of the areas that now make up the United States. And whereas mountains and rivers, lakes and valleys, states and counties, trails and towns across this land have Indian names. They are lasting reminders of the presence and the significance of American Indians, not just in our geography, but throughout the whole of American history. And whereas many of the foods we eat and the medicines and remedies we use were introduced by Indians and more than one highway follows an Indian trail. And whereas Indians make contributions in every area of endeavor in American life and our literature and all our arts draw upon Indian themes and wisdom. And whereas countless American Indians have served in our armed forces and have fought valiantly for our country. And whereas during the Thanksgiving season, generations of Americans are reminded of the early friendship of the pilgrims and the American Indians. So now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby dictate and proclaim November as Native American History Month in the city of Milton, Georgia. And this is given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the second day of November, twenty-twenty. So, and I don't know, do we have any Native Americans in our audience? If not, we'll save these proclamations and submit them, so. All right. So Tammy, if you would please call the next item.
Our third and final item is the presentation of fire station number forty-two design. Mr. Chief, I'm sorry, Fire Chief Robert Egger.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. One of my last official meetings here at the city of Milton. And I'm pleased to, since I can get my PowerPoint to come up, to present the early design of station forty-two. And this was put together with a team of firefighters from our department as well as the direction and coaching and of Bob Ashimy, the city architect, who has really brought this thing really together for us. So I'm going to ask Bob to come up. I'm going to talk about all the pretty pictures and I'll let Bob talk about some of the unique features of the building and all that. But as, Bob, come on up. Station forty-two, as you can see, this is the building that we've been living in for the last thirteen years now. And this building was built in the early seventies. I think we did a presentation on this back in, back in July. So we are still there and will maintain occupancy there until we're ready to take this building down and start construction of the new facility. The details of the existing building is it's thirty-eight hundred square feet, has five parking spaces, has five sleeping cubes, and those are literally cubes. And it's a back-end design where the fire truck has to pull out on Thompson Road and then back into the fire station. The new station is approximately sixty-five hundred square feet. It has twelve parking spaces, eight bunk rooms, two drive-through bays, an exercise room, a turnout gear room, a station office, and a decon room. Here's the site plan and Bob, if you want to jump in here at any point. But here you'll see how the most important feature of this is the drive-through bay of this. The fire truck can pull off Thompson Road, go around back and pull right into the fire station and ready to go. They don't have to, firefighters don't have to get out, back the truck in and possibly, that's probably one of the most dangerous things is backing a fire truck up and putting firefighters in traffic. Not that Thompson Road's a major thoroughfare, but it still has its hazards. And you can see the layout, the bays on one side and then the living quarters on the other side where the bunk rooms are all on the east side. And then in the center core is the living, the day room where the firefighters can relax as well as the kitchen area. And then towards the front of the building is the office and it has a small lobby area for any residents or visitors that may want to come by. Here's the initial front elevation. And Bob, if you want to touch on some of the uniqueness of this.
Okay, I'll just add that initially we thought we were going to have a potential of having a two-story building with a back end similar to what they have now. And we really worked hard to get it to be a one-story building and a drive-through structure, which I think for safety reasons and a lot of community concerns about two stories, visibility, is it going to, you know, have more of a community impact? So we really try to keep it low, low scale. And unlike forty-four, which is on the Deerfield Farm Base Code, this is in the rural Milton overlay, so we're trying to keep it much more rural looking. It's got a barn feel to it, keeping the same bifold doors, got a lot of gable roofs. Hopefully we got the cupola correct.
I was just getting right to that. I was going to ask you, what are the dimensions of that cupola?
Visually, hopefully it looks correct.
You know, it's pretty good and balanced when I'm here.
It looks balanced.
But I don't have your eye, but I mean, I'm happy.
You're happy with it?
It looks great.
Okay. We really put some effort into that to make sure. And we really tried to break up the roof lines to decrease the scale. We kept it board and batten with a water table. We have outdoor space on the back. I don't know if you want to show them the back view. We have, across Milton brackets, you'll see we have a fireplace, stone fireplace that goes right through between the day room and the kitchen. So it's a real vertical element that actually pierces through the roof. And you'll see it, you'll see the back has the patio with the kitchen area in there. And then this is like an interior pictorial of the kitchen area and the day room. So it'd have open trusses and you could see the fireplace. I tried to make that into a real main element in the middle of the space that actually pierces through the roof. So it kind of gives it that break in the room and it would be open from both sides. So I think it gave it a nice, a nice feeling internally. And any questions?
Any questions for Bob or Chief on this?
Looks great.
Looks good. Yeah.
Is the dog on the wind vane, is that up for any discussion? I think it needs a dash hound.
Is that a dalmatian?
Dalmatian.
Okay, all right. Dalmatian.
Got everything?
That looks beautiful.
Looks wonderful.
Yeah, I think, and you know, it's exciting with the new, the new facility that we just opened up. It's, you know, I'm hearing great reviews from our other peers and other departments and citizens, and this is just a, you know, moving forward on that. So, you know, both with Bob's help and Chief, it's kind of exciting that I'm sure it's been great for your, your career here, getting to be involved with all new facilities and whatnot. So thanks for everything both you guys have done.
And we do need to mention that Croft Associates, the architect firm that's on contract, had something to do with it too.
Yeah.
But most of it was Bob.
Two Bobs.
It was the chief.
See, now, now you can always point the finger, it was Bob's fault.
We will miss the chief.
Robert's fault or whatever.
We will miss the chief. I've been working really closely with the chief on all of these projects, so it's...
Okay, I think, and Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we do have one public comment on this item. That's okay to have that read into the record. Tammy?
Thank you. I do, I need to read this into the record. It is from Mr. Gary Jablonsky residing at two-six-eight-zero Grassview Drive here in Milton. Mayor Lockwood and distinguished members of the council, the packet literature available online prior to the eleven-two twenty-twenty council meeting gives very little detail regarding the design of fire station number forty-two. I'm sure I will learn more once the presentation is complete. Lacking details, I do wish to express my desire to provide the city's highly trained, very capable and dedicated firefighting staff with the very best equipment and accommodations. The budget looks like one-point-four million. I would like to welcome someone to contact me to explain impact fees. My main point is that I would like to see station forty-two built as a two-story structure for maximum efficiency and comfort of the firefighting staff. It is my understanding that the current plan is for a single-story unit. This may not be possible under the budget constraints to add this luxury, but I challenge the council to rethink their budget. Remember, the structure will be in use long after all the current council members are gone. The residents served by station forty-two will benefit from many years from a well-designed structure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll move on to our first presentations. Tammy, if you'll please sound those items.
That first item is consideration of RZ twenty-dash-one-seven, section sixty-four, three-ninety-five, uses prohibited in all zoning districts, temporary consumer fireworks. Agenda item number twenty-three zero-six. The second item is consideration of RZ twenty-eighteen to create a new use permit for farm winery consumption on premises of beer and/or liquor. Our third item is consideration of RZ twenty-one-nineteen to amend section sixty-four dash-one-one-two-one allowed use chart within the rural Milton overlay as it relates to the proposed use permit in RZ twenty-dash-eighteen. Agenda item number twenty-three zero-eight. Our fourth item is consideration of an ordinance to amend chapter four, section eighty-five, farm wineries of the alcoholic beverages of the code of the city of Milton, Georgia. Agenda item number twenty-three zero-nine. And our fifth and final item is consideration of an ordinance revision to chapter forty-six, article two, section forty-six dash-twenty-four for prohibitions of public and private littering. Agenda item number twenty-three one-zero.
Okay. Question on the first presentation item?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first presentation items as read by the city clerk.
Second. I have a motion from councilmember Bentley with a second from councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, we don't have any items under a public hearing or zoning agendas tonight, so we'll move to unfinished business. Our city clerk will please read the unfinished business item.
That item is consideration of an ordinance to amend appendix A parks and recreation fees and other charges, chapter thirty-four, section twenty-four of the Milton City Code to allow the collection of fees to rent the Birmingham United Methodist Church baseball slash softball field. Agenda item number twenty-two-nine-seven, internal manager of parks and recreation, Mr. Tom McElveen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is an amendment to chapter thirty-four of appendix A of the code of the city of Milton. In January of twenty-nineteen, the city began leasing the Birmingham United Methodist Church baseball field. It's been a very successful partnership, giving our baseball program a much-needed field, especially in the spring. This fall, though, we got approached by multiple softball teams in the Milton area loaded with Milton residents looking for space to practice. We tried to find space at Bell Park, but Bell Park was occupied by Hopeful Baseball and there wasn't much space available, especially space that the softball teams were looking for. So I approached the individual that leased the fields through Birmingham United Methodist Church and he agreed to allow us to rent the fields during our allotted times that the city has access to the field. But in order for us to collect these fees, we need the Birmingham United Methodist Church listed as a rentable facility under chapter thirty-four of appendix A. The rates that are proposed here are in line with the diamond-shaped rates that we do at Bell Park. That's what we use as our guideline. Twenty-five dollars per hour for the fields, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents if you need lights, a seventy-five dollar fee for lining the fields, and a hundred-dollar security deposit that's refunded after the rental's over at this point.
Any questions, Tom, on that? Okay. All right. We have any, we don't have any public comment, do we, Tammy?
We do not.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I approve that we approve agenda item number twenty-dash-two-nine-seven.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Longoria with a second from councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. If the city clerk will please call the first item, which was added from our consent agenda.
That first item is approval of a subdivision plat. It's a, the name of the development is Crossroads of Birmingham Highway, I'm sorry, Crossroads of Birmingham, Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road, land lot three-eight-zero, three-eight-one, four-one-three, and four-one-four. It is a final plat. It's thirty-five single-family lots, ten lots per AG1, and twenty-five lots per mixed two commercial buildings. The total acres is twenty-two-point-one-one-nine and it's zero-point-six-five lots per acre, three-point-seven-seven lots per acre in density. Agenda item number twenty-three zero-four, land development manager Tracy Wilds.
Mayors, councilmembers, tonight I am presenting to you the final plat for Crossroads at Birmingham. It is located in the southeast quadrant of Birmingham Highway and Birmingham Road, so across the street from Birmingham United Methodist Church and south of the public shopping center. It is a final plat, thirty-five single-family lots and two commercial buildings off of twenty-two-point-one-one-nine acres. This shows the, a couple of slides of the plat. There are several sheets, so I just want to highlight a few of the, of the plats or the sheets. The, the development has two entrances, the main entrance off of Birmingham Road, so across from the public shopping center, and then another entrance off of Birmingham Highway across from Birmingham United Methodist Church. This entrance will divide two commercial buildings, but both of these entrances will lead to the larger lots towards the rear of the property. There are site elements that are still under construction at this development. Those items include a pedestrian footbridge that's going to be between an upper and lower pond, walking paths, a larger lawn green area on the development, and then of course street trees and sod and mulch and plantings throughout the whole development. All of the items that are still under construction or have not quite started have bonds that have been posted for all of them. There are some items that have been completed, one being the entrance off of Birmingham Road, so again, across from the public shopping center. In the upper picture, you will see a conceptual rendering that was done during the design phase to give some ideas of what the signage might look like. The two pictures on the bottom were taken this morning and these, this is the signs that have been installed, the entrance sign, of course, new sod that has been installed, landscaping and mulch. There's also a village green that has been completed and installed on site. This is the village green closest to the main entrance. The upper left-hand picture is a conceptual rendering that again was done at design stage. And then the photos on the bottom and to the right of the screen were taken this morning, so they show the sidewalks that have been installed, landscaping, mulch, and plantings. So this development's moving along. There's a lot to continue, but they're making progress and they're moving forward, so it's going to be exciting in the next several months to watch the development go vertical and some of these other amenities be installed. Staff has reviewed the plans that were submitted. They have approved the plans that have been submitted thus far, and it does meet all the applicable codes. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Laura?
Just wanted to, I noticed the landscaping too, it looks great.
Good.
It's very helpful to see the concept drawings compared to what's going in, so thank you very much for that. And I know you'll be keeping track of the conditions of zoning, because I remember we, it's been two years, but I know we had quite a few on this one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? And I do want to clarify one thing to Laura's point about two years. This, this was not only, this was approved two years ago. This is just a final plat that, just to make sure that the developer is complying with what was originally required or approved, so it's not that we're, we're not approving a new development or whatever. The other thing I just want to, you know, comment on too, a couple of things is that this property itself was, was zoned prior to the city of Milton with the density on it. And when it came before us, the developer actually submitted something different, which I, I believe and I think most everybody else, it was much more improved. It was less homes, larger homes, less actual rooftops, and then plus some of these amenities you see on it. So as a side note, I had to go speak, and it was about the time of this zoning, I had to go speak to a group of, go to a career day at one of the elementary schools. And so I had to go to all the different classrooms and so to talk about city stuff. So myself and the other councilmembers took two plats, took the plat of what was approved versus what was originally zoned and allowed and let all the third graders look at it and we explained off each of them and then had them all sit down and vote on, you know, pick their one or two. And out of all day long at every class, it was, all of them picked the, you know, the one that is submitted and being built now. So it was obviously a nicer plan. And the other thing I might want to maybe suggest for a city, because obviously no one likes to see raw dirt, but when you do look at the renderings and the finished product, it is beautiful as well as all the amenities with the green space and the walking trails and all that. So maybe moving forward, we might want to, you know, as part of our zoning conditions or allow the developer to put up maybe some rendering signs so that, you know, on the front. And that way people driving by don't just see, you know, trees going down, they see what's going to be there to replace it and the greenery and whatnot. So anyways, that's just my comments, but... So is there any other questions or comments on that? I think the property owner is here if there is any questions. Is there any public comment? Okay, I'll open up for a motion on this one.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number two-zero-dash-three-zero-four.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from councilmember Jamison with a second from councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. See, if we will move on to our next new business item, Tammy, you would please read that item.
Our second item is consideration of a resolution adopting the capital improvements element known as CIE twenty-twenty annual update relating to the city's impact fee program. Agenda item number thirty-two-three-one-one. Ms. Michelle McIntosh-Roch.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a required element for communities that charge impact fees, which we are. We adopted an impact fee ordinance back in twenty-fifteen, and every year since then we've been doing our annual CIE update, which is the capital improvement element. It's a list of projects that we're able to spend the impact fee monies on, and we need to update that financially every year with the state of Georgia and the Atlanta Regional Commission. We had a public hearing here September ninth, and our consultants was here and we talked about the CIE. We sent it off. You guys approved a resolution to send the draft document to ARC and DCA, and they have since approved it October thirteenth. So we are free to adopt this document, which we are here today with a resolution to adopt the document and keep our local government, qualified local government status moving forward. So that's what we have before you today is to adopt the capital improvement element known as the CIE.
Okay, are there any questions on this? Any public comment?
There are none.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. I thought there was a hearing, but I'll close that. There's no council discussion. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number twenty-dash-three-one-one.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from councilmember Bentley with a second from councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tammy, if you'd please sound the next item.
Our final new business item is consideration of an amended emergency ordinance of the mayor and city and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, under section three-point-one-eight of the charter of the city of Milton, Georgia, to provide for the operation of the city of Milton, Georgia during the public emergency known as the novel coronavirus disease, twenty-nineteen global pandemic, to become effective upon adoption by the council to supersede the existing emergency ordinance and for other purposes. Agenda item number twenty-three-one-two, city attorney, Mr. Karen Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, we are currently within the confines of the existing emergency ordinance, as the council's aware. Since roughly March, we have had a series of... we have had a series of emergency ordinances adopted pursuant to the Emergency Management Section of the Milton Code. That code really anticipates two different sorts of actions. First of all, the Charter, Section three point one-eight, authorizes the city council to engage and entertain emergency ordinances to, I think the language it uses is meet an emergency situation, to address emergency situation. And then, of course, the city's code anticipates that the mayor has certain powers with respect to handling of emergency situations. And as this pandemic has gone on, we have become a little bit more refined in how we have handled these. And while we had originally done some emergency declarations under the city's emergency power ordinance, most of them were, I think all I can say would be sort of business impact mitigation declarations, and we can discuss them if we need to, waivers of fees, allowances for to-go alcohol, things of that nature to mitigate business concerns. The city itself has also exercised its power under the ordinance to, on a thirty-day cycle, declare a bail. And we're not, of course, alone in this. Most jurisdictions are doing the same. And of course, the state of Georgia, vis-à-vis the governor, is continuing to do the same. So this is a continuation of the emergency ordinance. Now, it would not become effective until November ninth, because as I said, we're in the middle of one right now, and they are tending to run co-terminals right now with the governor's statewide ordinance. Order, not ordinance. This one, however, does something different. And so I need to bring that to your attention and call it out to you with respect to what this does, because the last few of these ordinances have been fairly the same, pretty much the same. They have, for instance, done things like implemented the city's reopening plan, et cetera. But this one does something different, and that is this, live performance venues. By any measure, I think it's safe to say that live performance venues, which typically involve assemblies of people, have been uniquely affected by COVID-19. They were one of, sort of, the first to fall, if you will. And in fact, in the ordinances I have drafted, I walk through some of that history. But as early as March twenty-third, March twenty-third, the governor's order prohibited assemblies of ten individuals. And then by April second, the governor's order made it manifest that live performance venues are shut down. It wasn't really until around July first that live performance venues began to get any sort of traction at all to be able to open back up. And as, of course, as I think is self-evident, their reopening was very, very regimented and restricted. So to the extent that there are live performance venues in Milton, and I believe that there are, and I believe we will all acknowledge that there are, they have been uniquely affected. For instance, to the extent that they are outdoor live performance venues, particularly with restricted seasons, if you will, and I'm thinking particularly of a season that occurs during the warm weather months of roughly May through the end of October, by way of just the orders I told you about, their season was significantly limited because they simply couldn't function. And so one of the things that this ordinance does that is in front of you this evening would effectively extend any local rules or impediments or codes that would affect a live performance venue for the term of this additional ordinance. So that would be for from November ninth to December ninth. In other words, if an entity like Matildas was required to close down at the end of October, it would allow, effective November ninth, it's to continue operation until December ninth, trying to do what we have been doing in Milton since the epidemic or the pandemic occurred, which is to mitigate the impact of it on business. It's not a change to any conditional use permits or zoning. You can't do that. But it is, in fact, a police power exercise extending that season by simply allowing the entity to exist and not enforcing our codes against it during that period. That's what this does. Again, it's only for the term of this additional thirty days, and it's only a business mitigation measure. Otherwise, the ordinance is what you've seen before. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council.
Okay, just a quick question. That, you know, if it's a live music venue or, you know, Matildas, that is allowed, you know, with the governor's and state orders, those were allowed to operate, correct?
They are, yeah. I mean, the governor's order contains some fairly significant restrictions with respect to live performance venues, but under those exacting restrictions, yes, they have some degree of allowance to reopen them. I would never bring to you anything that was going to be in derogation of the governor's order because the governor's order controls. But to the extent that, for instance, a Matildas can operate under the governor's order, this would also allow it to operate under the city of Milton Code.
And that's obvious. I knew you wouldn't, but I just wanted to clarify to make sure that that's correct. Any questions for Ken or comments on this?
I just need to make a statement. I have recused myself from all votes on Matildas in the past and, as you advise, into the future as well. So I will continue to be recused.
This doesn't exactly speak to Matildas. I don't put the name of private companies, but I understand your point. Obviously, that is an entity that will be directly, a direct benefactor of this, so I get that. I think that's fine. I think that's consistent with past actions.
Anybody else? Joe?
So when we first discussed this in the past, I guess the very first version of this ordinance or the instance of the ordinance, it was back in the end of March. It might have been the early April, whenever it was. It coincided with the governor's actions. We needed to take certain steps to make sure that we could do the things that we needed to do, not knowing what we were going to be facing. I think we've been educated quite a bit in the meantime. Ken, is there something about us continuing to pass this ordinance that enables the city to access government services, government levels that are higher than the city's services or funding or emergency funds or anything like that that if we were to not pass this, all of a sudden, we would be an outlier with regards to that?
Well, I would definitely say that we would be an outlier because most of the jurisdictions that I'm dealing with are doing this as a matter of course as well and running co-terminals with the governor's orders, just like we are. It's the smarter play. To your direct, an answer to your direct question is, I don't know, but let me answer all of it. I don't know, but I will tell you this. GMA and FEMA funding is something that we cannot risk not having the full right to get reimbursement. And so long as we are in a state of local emergency, that makes our hand stronger to be able to drive that funding from GMA and FEMA. And my fear would be is that if we do not take this pandemic from a local perspective just as seriously as the state is taking it, then we could, in fact, imperil our ability, if, in fact, additional federal or state dollars become available, we could imperil our ability to retrieve those funds. It is true that CARES Act funding has put a little bit of a different spin on this. I mean, the federal government particularly has responded to COVID in a way that has been extraordinary from the amount of funds they have made available. But I still continue to believe it is the smarter play for governments to continue to declare these local emergencies just to make sure that if there is FEMA or GMA money at the end of this that we otherwise would have had access to but for not continuing to declare an emergency, I don't want us to be on the other side of that and say, gee whiz, I wish we had continued to run co-terminals with the state of Georgia.
Thank you. Stephen, another part of this had to do with, I'm going to say this seeming potential to remove a layer of transparency that normally exists with decisions that the council makes, right? So part of this ordinance has to do with our ability to make decisions outside the council chamber and outside of the council itself that need to be made in order to keep the city functioning, to keep the city operating. We didn't know what those things might be. We just knew we needed to be prepared. That was one of the reasons we passed that. I know we've got examples. To the life of me, I don't know how many there are, and I don't think there were any that somehow weren't followed up with discussions that we had or votes that we followed up on. But do you know, number-wise, how many times we've had to exercise the ordinance?
It just so happens that I have a feel for that. And it just so happens. And, no kidding, I did want to be prepared for that because, obviously, this has gone on a while. And you've already sort of intimated that in your previous question to me. But with respect to what the city of Milton has done, there have basically, as I mentioned, there's two tracks. There's the ordinance track under the charter, and then there's the sort of the mayoral declaration tract under the code. And we have sort of merged those. We have specifically tried to bring this out into the council chamber and adopt these things as part of an ordinance. So yes, it is true. With respect to mayoral declarations, for instance, there was to-go alcohol sales that was done by way of a mayoral declaration. It finally made its way into the ordinance as well, but it was done as a mayoral declaration to-go alcohol sales. Everybody's doing it. We allow the ability of some additional signage. Retail got hit hard. Retailers needed to let people know, hey, we're open, and here are our unique hours of business. This was, many jurisdictions did this. And so we allowed additional retail signage by way of a mayoral declaration. To further mitigate the impact on businesses, we did allow a deferral of occupation tax renewals and payments for a time. We also allowed a brief deferral on penalties related to alcohol excise taxes, again, business mitigation. And we also allowed those that had private catered venues to sell to-go meals. And that's what my review this afternoon found. And again, all of this, I believe, has been brought to this chamber. All of it has been discussed, I believe, in this chamber. And again, I don't mean to speak for the mayor, but I will say there was a decided position taken that it was his hope that the council would sign off on everything that he has done or had been asked to do.
Okay, so in terms of answering potential questions that we may get from our citizens, because I know there was a lot of concern about this. There was a lot of talk in the city about this particular topic when it first came up. We have had opportunity to use the powers that were part of this ordinance. And it'd be hard to say that we've overused it because you just listed the five opportunities that we have over the last eight months or whatever it's been. So it's sort of rare. A lot of this occurred early on, and at the end of the day, it hasn't had any impact to our transparency because all of these things have been items that wound up being discussed again and passed by the council. That's fair, Ken? All right, thank you.
And I might want to add to Joe's point and to Ken's, too. You know, basically, you know, these powers or this ordinance was adopted early on in case there was emergencies. And Ken, as you read the items we are, or I used them on, but as Ken said, in being transparent, everything we did, my first priority was to brief the council on it and make sure that the council was on board and then bring it before, you know, in a public meeting to confirm. So there was, you know, I know, to Joe's point, there was people thinking, well, it's the mayor's executive power orders, and I was going to steal their land and raise taxes and do all this kind of stuff. But we, all our staff and Ken and you guys working together, we'd made sure that everything was transparent. And then if it was done and under the guise of a timely, having to do something timely, it was always discussed and brought back before, just like this, to council to make sure that, you know, they proved it or had feedback on it.
Yeah, I think it's important for us, because, you know, we were going to pass this tonight because it's the thing to do. It makes sense. It's the right thing to do. But I'm worried that we're going to continue to pass this, and it's going to go out until summer of next year. And so I want to make sure people understood that it's, again, it's not just a, you know, a sinkhole or a black hole, whatever you want to call it, in terms of information going in, nothing's coming out. We've been very open and transparent about what's going on.
It's, if I may, just very quickly, to your point, I mean, there's been other things in the ordinance. For instance, the ordinance in its early iterations set forth a standing declaration that we could have Zoom meetings. So sort of, you know, sort of, just the operations, you may recall, early on, we shut down some of the policymaking we did to make sure that we were not doing anything that the citizens couldn't come and be a participant in. So it even went into things like that. And even the ordinance now basically provides sort of some flexibility with respect to citizen engagement remotely. For instance, at the beginning of this meeting, just to see a manifestation of that, there was an email that got to be read, right? I don't know that the individual was actually here, physical, in the assembly. He was on Zoom, okay. The simple point, though, is I think we're leaning forward, trying to sort of take, allow unique action in an extraordinary time. And that is also sort of found within the four corners of this ordinance.
Okay, any other questions? I'll open up for a motion with Councilmember Bentley had recused herself, so I'll open up a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number twenty-three-one-two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous with Councilman Bentley abstaining. Okay, if our city, let's see. We'll move on to council discussion. Do we have any council discussion? Mayor or council member? Jamison?
Mayor and council, I had an issue that came up the past week with a resident, and I talked to staff. I felt it's appropriate to talk to y'all to maybe get your blessing to talk to staff. The issue was, I'll have Bob come up and maybe help me on this, but this is the second time in two months where a resident tries to put it in a pool. And the way their property is platted, their front yard is actually their backyard, and the backyard is actually their front yard. And so for them to put it in a pool in their backyard, it has to get a variance. And so trying to explain that to a resident is extremely frustrating for them to have to go to the variance process. Takes another two months, time, money. And I think, talking to staff, there's a few of these instances that have been coming about to where it's really taking more time and energy for something that is extremely easy. And we, I mean, it's something to where it shouldn't be going to the Board of Zoning Appeals for something like that. And maybe you can help me explain that a little better since.
Mayor, Council. So there are several items that come in repeatedly over the years that we've been tracking. One of them is this particular, like, on a flag lot, what constitutes front yard, rear yard, where they actually end up putting their swimming pool. If they actually put the swimming pool in the place that the code requires it, it would literally be in the front yard, literally, visually, in the front of their house. be in the front yard, literally, visually in the front of their house. And everybody realizes that that's just not really what the code's intended to do. We have others that come repeatedly, like playground structures, you know, do we really need to keep them 50 feet from the rear yard? And people are trying to, so a lot of these items come in front of the BZA and they repeatedly get, they repeatedly get approved. And this being one of them. So with that, Councilmember Jameson is, I guess, suggesting that we look, from a staff perspective, at these items that maybe are repeatedly coming in and come back and make a presentation, maybe in a work session, and show you what they are and how often they've been repeated and what the voting has been. And then maybe if the council thinks they're viable to come up with a text amendment to clean them up so that we don't have to keep having citizens go through this whole process and staff and you all getting phone calls.
I mean, I understand where they're coming from. You explained it very well, Bob.
All right. Well, thank you.
Well, that's clear. And I think we can, why don't we just go straight to a text? I mean, why do we have to do a work session on this? Let's just go to a text amendment. That is a clear, easy problem to understand.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd like to call it a, a common sense, give staff the ability to have a common sense text amendment. And to this point in this situation you're talking about, you know, in a nutshell, it's like Bob explained, technically, the property is reversed. But the reality is, you know, to, to put the pool behind the house in the backyard, what everybody knows and perceives as the backyard is technically the front yard because the way the lot was planted. So in those type situations, it would be nice if staff had the ability administratively to say, aha, this is obvious, you know, common sense says this, versus having a citizen, and to Peyton's point, having to explain to them why they have to go through months of this and expense and all that of going through a variance when they're going to put the pool in the backyard instead of the front yard. So it's the opposite. So I think that's the point you're trying to.
And I think what, and maybe Carol's point was, the work session might be not really for this, but I think there's like multiple ones. And so maybe council might not be in favor of some of the other ones. But I think this one is easy.
Maybe we can deduct this one from that.
Yeah. We proceed with this one right away. And then if we need to, we can always come back to some of the other ones and just have council take a look at them and see if they're, most of them are like this. They're pretty just cut and dry and pretty simple. And they just make common sense. I mean, when you look at them, I don't think anybody would disagree that, and it'd still be subject to some sort of administrative approval by staff, so.
Yeah, no, I agree. And this is similar to a few years back, we looked at some of the agricultural type things, and we asked staff, you know, bring to us what, what you guys are seeing that comes before us that really doesn't make sense and is really working against what the vision, you know, that we had, i.e., we're looking for agricultural, equestrian-looking properties. But our ordinance is saying, you can't put a barn here, and you can't do this and that. So, you know, it's frustrating people when they're putting, you know, splitting lots and building houses instead. And this is the same kind of example. If you, you know, can kind of be looking at other things that, you know, are working against what I think the city's vision is and whatnot, then we can look at those things too.
So what I'll do is I'm going to proceed right away on this particular item, and then we'll make a list of some of the other ones.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in council have any? Okay.
I just want to make a comment about what the city went through this past week and our response to it. Several people are in the room, Public Works, Fire, City Manager was, boots on the ground on Friday, and I really appreciate it. It was, it was worse than I think we, we thought it would be. But I, our response was extraordinary. So thank everyone that had.
Amen. That was great.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Everybody behind the scenes and everything they did. So I think, basically, in talking to the power companies in all of Georgia, got hit the hardest, I think, overall, the hardest state out of any of the states, just the amount, the spread, the depth of it. So, all right, we'll move on to staff reports and start with Public Works.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Evening.
That is actually the first item that I want to talk about is Storms Aid Response. Obviously, this is a Public Works, Police and Fire response, but I just want to specifically talk about Public Works tonight. I certainly don't want to take anything away from Fire and Police, but you're absolutely correct. That was a big surprise to us when it came. We knew it was coming. We were expecting the winds. And I do believe that Public Works stepped up and was phenomenal. We only had four staff that really responded. Unfortunately, I was out of town, but I've got to give credit to Mr. Roddy Moats, Matt Falstrom, Sarah Leaders, and Jay Hadid of our staff. They were just outstanding. Add to that, we had Parks and Recreation, the whole staff of Park Recreation helped us in at least the first night for Stormy Rain. That would be Tom McElveen and Thomas Rhodes. Got to give a shout out to TriSkates Incorporated, our maintenance and operation contractor. They were just phenomenal. They supplied all the equipment needs that we, that we had. And at one point, I think they had 12 employees just for Milton alone. So it was just a tremendous response by staff. And quite frankly, I'm very proud of them. We've estimated over 60 trees fell in the city of Milton. One of my staff members said it was way over that, but we seem to be around 60, 65 trees. Forty of those trees actually blocked roads. And 17 of those 40 actually had the power lines, or lines wrapped up in it, which was a lot of the delay, as you know. We're going to be picking up, the roads are clear. You know that as well. But we'll be picking up the debris now for some time to come. We're also going to find some leaners and some hangers out there. Please let us know if you see any of those, particularly over the roadway. But they're, they're going to be out there. We'll see those in the next coming days. Traffic signals fared very well. We obviously lost power to most of our signals. I think we had 15 signals. The battery backups engaged, but they only held for a certain period of time before they completely went out. We did have a little internal damage to one of our signals, but that was relatively minor and not uncommon, yeah, very common. This was not a rain event, although we did get over three inches of rain from Thursday to Sunday. But I don't think, other than saturating the ground, I don't think it really was a, a storm water event. Our gravel roads held up very well. As a matter of fact, I don't think we got any calls for gravel road washouts. I'm sure they happened, but they, they were very minimal. So just wanted to throw those out there, just to let you know that Public Works was, stood up to the plate. Currently, we are, contractors starting, as you probably see, they're going to start clearing the Hopewell roundabout projects. And they're going to start underground utility relocations. So it's going to take some time, but you'll see some activity out there. The Cogburn Road sidewalks should be starting this month as well. The resurfacing projects, Hopewell looks beautiful. The full-depth reclamation went very well. We got a few punchless items on Hopewell. But for the most part, they're done there on Hopewell, and they're moving over and been working on Providence, New Providence now, for a few days. And they'll be out there for a couple more weeks. But they're doing their thing, and they're moving right along. The storm did delay them a few days, but they should be fine. The resurfacing work at the Hopewell Place and Sunnybrook Farms is completed as well as part of that project. The mobile app, you know, we have a Milton app that you can download for work orders. Just to kind of give you an update, we'll be rolling out an updated Milton app. It's going to be a little easier to use for the residents, and it's probably going to have a lot more capabilities than just reporting a work order. So our software vendor is working on that, and we should be seeing those come out fairly soon. So I'll give you a report, and I'm sure we'll roll them out to the public as well. If you haven't noticed, we've updated our kiosk in the main lobby. It's, it's well over time. It's been several years. And new information. So just when you walk by, I just kind of noticed that. That was actually a Dennis Miller project. So you know Dennis is retired from, from the city of Milton. And finally, we have one project out to bid, and that is the street sweeping. Actually, they opened this afternoon. The bids opened this afternoon. And we're evaluating those. But I will tell you, it appears that the bid, bids are going to be within budget. Any questions?
You know, not a question, but again, just to Laura's point, thank you for your team and all they had to do. So it's, I was talking to a citizen, and they were complimenting the city on response. And I also brought up the fact, even when we occasionally have the snowstorm or the ice storm, and we usually get generally, you know, a lot of compliments versus our peers from our citizens. And I had to explain, you know, you guys do a really good job at using what you have to, to deal with a situation like that, whether it's this big storm or, you know, a snow and ice thing or whatever. Because as I was explaining to this citizen, you know, you got to appreciate you guys working hard with what you have. But the fact that, you know, you're really, as a taxpayer, wouldn't want you, you know, we really wouldn't want you to go out and buy 20 snowplows and have them sit idle for three years, you know, and paying and maintaining just for that one time. And same kind of thing with a storm like this. You know, we're not prepared to handle this every, every month or whatever. But my point is, I want to thank you guys and compliment you on the ability of what you can do when it, when it really, the top, when it gets, the going gets tough. You're, y'all really stepped up. So thank you.
And I'll be sure to pass that along.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Chief Edgar?
Mayor, Council. Normally, I would stand up here and tell you about the number of babies we deliver or the number of puppies we, we have saved. But tonight, I want to say thank you. This will be the last time I stand up here as the Milton Fire Chief. And I have proudly worn this uniform for 12 years. It has been my pleasure to serve and work with this council, the past council members, the Milton community, the city employees, and the men and women of the Milton Fire Rescue Department. I believe we made great strides as a department. We've developed an advanced EMS system with highly skilled medical professionals, outstanding firefighters who understand teamwork, and who always go out of their way to serve this community. We have improved our ISO rating, supported MDA, acquired state-of-the-art equipment, and built and are building amazing facilities. We increased our educational requirements for the future leaders of this department. We have diversified our staff. We have a great community outreach program, a fire prevention program, and an emergency management program. We have taken proactive approaches for firefighter wellness and protecting our firefighters against cancer. And most recently, managed our response to the pandemic. So this may sound a little cliche, but you always want to leave a place better than when you found it. And I think we have done that. And I say "we" a lot in here because it takes a team, and it's not one person. It's not me. It's the entire department that has come together and really made this department outstanding. So thank you for your support, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. Appreciate it.
Chief Edgar, I just want to, again, say thank you. I don't think we could have, City of Milton could have had a better fire chief for the last 12 years. You know, you're great about saying "we," which is important. And I know there's a lot of "we" in everything that's been accomplished, but you've certainly been the leader on that. And I've definitely left Milton, the city of Milton, and the department. And, you know, again, as we look around, and not only just the buildings, but just the, the culture. And when you look at all the guys that, on your team, it says a lot. So we're going to miss you. But we're also fortunate to have had you this long and also in your next, next phase of life. And we'll have to come down and go fishing with you sometime.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Greg, can you top that one?
I'm not retiring today. I've only been here 10 months. But I mean, first, I do want to say thank you. I mean, I came here 10 months ago. People like Chief Edgar, his team really have worked with me and been just so generous. And I think everyone here, I think, I think it's not, speaking for the city staff, I know everyone besides the council will say, you know, thank you for everything and also just being a good guy and being there for us. And his team is, and it kind of echoes throughout the team. So one thing we all do have in common, I also, while the firefighters and the public works were out there slaving through that storm, I was in my basement. But I, we did put out, in roughly 24-hour span, we put out 22 tweets, 20, 22 tweets, 20 Facebook posts, not just road closure, electricity updates, city status updates, but things like that, thanking Chick-fil-A and utility workers, and also public servicing, public service messages, the things about safe burning, generator safety, and things like that. I bring that up partly because communications is not just about, you know, kind of the bells and whistles and things like that, is to make sure people are engaged and informed. And when they needed to do this, and this is not just the only example, the week before that, we had a water main break, gas line rupture, water main cut off, white columns because a car hit a fire hydrant. That's the kind of stuff that people turn to us. So the thing about that, though, is actually drives up our audience. So just in the last 28 days, we had over 110% more Twitter, like for Twitter alone, tweet, tweet impressions, like over 160% more profile visits. Our mentions went up over 90%, about 90%. So that we're actually building the audience by being responsive. And that's really not just about me. It's about everyone on this team, meaning everyone in the city who's feeding me information and kind of sending me photos, giving me ideas for public service messages and things like that. So I want to thank everyone. And really, one of the things we do, which is unique, is we work with really all our departments. So just right now, we're working on with Parks and Rec about our wall of fame honorees, right? Daily posts on that. We're showcasing our new 9/11 learning system with fire. We're partnering with police on the Halloween event, and then the book drive they're doing, working with community development on the comprehensive plan process, and among other people. I have a really hands-on role in strategic plan process. And we're teaming up with Public Works on many things, including road reconstruction details, and we're going to revamp our projects page. And there's a lot more. And another thing, too, is we're also just trying to showcase things in different ways. So this week, we're going to relaunch our YouTube page, which has had 15 original videos in the last eight months or so. By comparison, we usually had one or two a year. So we're trying to just reach people in the different mediums. So there's a lot going on. As anyone who's been over my staff meetings, I keep on saying all this stuff, just, just there's always a lot of little things, but I love it. And thank you very much for being supportive. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
On the, on the generator safety.
Sure.
That one was shocking to see how you could blow yourself up and whatnot.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, we have too many examples around of some bad things, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Is there anything else, staff or council? And I'll open for a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
All right. I have a motion from Councilmember Cookerly with a second for Councilmember Memorial to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.